In the audience, yeah, well, welcome. I'm alumni. I hope you enjoy yourself. It's a show. Being that there is a change to the agenda, do we have a motion to amend the agenda? Motion by Mr. Tisdale, second by Mr. Lawrence. Any discussion?
None.
All in favor? Unanimous vote. Do I have a motion now to...oh, go ahead and read those changes, please, Ms. Michelle.
To the routine agenda, we are adding a docket of claims in the amount of $39,554.91.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Tisdale, second by Mr. Lawrence to accept as amended. All in favor? Unanimous vote. This brings us to the presentation agenda. Mayor, your report.
Thank you, Madam President. My pleasure to ask Kathy Springer to come up and give us a United Way update. Thank you, Kathy.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Thank you for having me today, and Council, thank you. I'm Kathy Springer. I'm the CEO of United Way of South Mississippi, and I would like to thank the city for allowing United Way of South Mississippi to run a workplace campaign in the city. Last year, 56 city employees made a gift to United Way of South Mississippi, and thank you for that. The support of the city of Biloxi is greatly appreciated, and when your employees make a gift to United Way of South Mississippi, 99 cents out of every dollar stays right here in the four counties we serve, which are Harrison, Hancock, Pearl River, and Stone. The gifts are tax deductible. In total, United Way of South Mississippi awarded over $650,000 in grants here this year in July. An additional $15,000 was awarded to Pearl River County to aid flood victims this year. And this year alone, Your United Way accomplished the following within the city of Biloxi. We funded the Gulf Coast Center for Nonviolence in the grant amount of $50,000 for their therapeutic early education class. Moore Community House received $75,000 in grant funding for their early education and early pre-K program. The Boys and Girls Club of the Gulf Coast received $55,000 in grant funding for their academic Project Learn program. Feeding the Gulf Coast was awarded $45,000 in grant funding for their mobile food pantry. And Catholic charities received $80,000 for their food pantry and social services. Your United Way is the administrator of Dolly Parton's Imagination Library. We have over 800 children actively enrolled in Dolly Parton's library, and 470 of those enrolled live in Harrison County, and 130 of those live within the city of Biloxi. The Dolly Parton Library sends one age-appropriate book to enrolled kids between birth and age five at no cost to the family. Your United Way spends nearly $50,000 a year providing this program to our children. We are members of Mississippi's Campaign for Grade Level Reading. Just this Friday will be the Project Homeless Connect. Your United Way staff will be on hand assisting homeless with many services and to help them with their needs. We'll be at the Donald Snyder Center Friday morning. We have seven free pre-K classes in Harrison County. There are 140 kids in Harrison County enrolled in free pre-K. In January, we will once again hold a diaper drive in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King, Jr. Last year, we gave 2,700 diapers to Moore Community House and the Center for Nonviolence. Diapers are a great expense to a young family. We're in the middle of the iHeartRadio Coat Drive, where last year we collected 75 coats for families, and we gave those to the Center for Nonviolence. We support Biloxi's Excel by Five program, and in July, we had the Fill the Bus program at the local Walmarts, and we collected over 2,000 individual school supplies for kids who can't afford them, and we had such a successful drive because the Biloxi Indian football team was there and their full regalia, helping shoppers make a donation to our kids that have a need. Each year, United Way of South Mississippi hosts the annual Day of Caring, where teams of volunteers go out into the community and complete service projects. This year, we completed projects at the Center for Nonviolence, the Back Bay Mission, and Loaves and Fishes, all right here in the city of Biloxi. We do so many other things across the four counties, but I wanted you to know what we are doing within our city. Biloxi is my city. Biloxi is my home, so I'm very proud when we are able to work within our own city. Today, just so you know, our board member Greg Kapranica, who is the general manager at Sparklight, is in the Council today, and Kelly Colwell and Joshua Wilson are also on our staff. They are here today. But I'm not asking for anything today. I'm just wanting to give you some information so that you know that Your United Way is working hard with your gifts every single day. So, thank you very much, and if there's any questions, I'll take them.
Do we have any questions on the Council?
Appreciate the work.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Kathy, for leading United Way and the work that you're doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask Chief Miller at this time to come up, give us an update on homeless and some of the things that are happening in that world.
Thank you, Mayor. So, last week, there was a good bit of complaining about the homeless, and apparently the city wasn't doing a lot about it. Well, we have been working for quite a while now for this particular program, the last two months, so really for about a month and a half have we seen results. So, Major Chris Deback is assigned to this. He's worked very hard, so this is just the beginning results that you see. So, approximately, like I said, two months ago, we gave them, the nonprofit organizations around town, we gave them the names of 34 homeless folks that we felt like were very problematic for us. Since that time, you can see that four were bused to family members. 14 have been housed. Three have been employed. Two have applied for VA resources, which they're currently waiting on. I'm sure that they're going to get those. Two out of the 34 showed no interest in having any help at all. One was arrested and extradited out of state. So, that's 26 so far that we've dealt with, and the remaining are waiting on either housing due to mental illness or funding issues. Some of the funding issues are being worked out. Some of them, some of the homeless or people who follow this, what we say homeless category, can get benefits or are getting benefits, and so we think those benefits should be used to house them somewhere. So, we're working on that now. And then you'll see from September 19th, 2019 until November 19th, 2019, we arrested 205 folks associated with homelessness for a total of 345 separate charges. Then on the back of that page is an article from Mobile, and if you'll take a look at that when you get a chance, it basically tells us what New York City is doing with their homeless, and they're shipping them down, shipping them all over the country. You can see this article doesn't mention Biloxi, but it mentions Gulfport and Goshay has been two places, two cities where quite a few homeless from New York were sent to. And then at the bottom of that page, you'll see it says, "Click here to view map for homeless people." The next three pages are that click here, so that's the next report. So, I'll answer any questions for you. I know it takes a little while to read that.
Do we have any questions? Go ahead.
Let me add to follow up with the, you know, every Monday morning, we have a directors' meeting, and Chief gives us an update on the newcomers, and it, well, there's about 80 to 90 homeless encounters every week.
We're close to it, yes.
Yeah. And, you know, when you sort of dollarize those transactions, it's costing us money. You know, if it takes 15 minutes to address these things, that's, you know, we've got four or five that are dedicated just to the homeless operation. Is that right, Chief?
That's right.
And so, we're actually burning resources to help some of these folks that want to have help, and some of them don't want to have help, and we encourage, I encourage folks, when you see something that's obviously a homeless situation, you know, doing something they're not supposed to be doing, call someone, because we need to do, because we don't want anyone to take advantage of us. We're very, I think, caring. A community will get you help when you want help, but we don't want to be taken advantage of, and I think that's an issue ongoing, not just Biloxi, but, you know, our population's between 300 and 400 if you go into the trees and the bushes and places that people are sleeping. So, it, you know, our visitors are going to experience something that we don't want them to experience, and if we can help our chief and our police department address these, you know, I encourage you to pick up the phone and give us a heads up, and we'll address it. Chief, I'll let you go with that.
This is just a start. Like I said, Major Chris Deback is the only one that was assigned this. I think he's done remarkably well for less than two months, and so we will probably divert more of our resources towards this.
Yes, thank you, Chief. And I'm thinking, does the police department, with all these, I guess, resolutions, are accounting for who is no longer in the area, and why? Is that done by your staff, or is that done with community agencies or civic groups?
As of this two months, these 34 people we can account for. Before that, if it was handled, it was handled by one of the nonprofits.
Now, well, what I'm getting at, if 14 have been housed, did somebody on your staff arrange for housing, or there were other agencies or entities that did that?
That's right. Either Bag Bay Mission or the Homeless Coalition, somebody. Everybody's kind of working together here, and they've had the resources. At this point, it has not cost us anything other than our time.
Right.
Even the bus fares to send them home has not cost the city.
Well, you're more familiar with the numbers than anybody else. Is this trend getting, indicating that things are getting better in terms of the homeless situation here, and that the numbers are being reduced, or is it getting worse and we're seeing an increase?
I think you're going to have to ask me that in a couple of months. I don't think I have enough.
Making a note right now.
Please do. I don't think we have enough information right now. You know, we inadvertently had kind of become a place where the homeless thought they could get a lot of resources quickly, so we have a lot coming in here. And I think it's going to take a couple of months before people realize that, hey, you're not going to get the resources there that you thought you would.
Well, I know that you have to separate these individuals, those that really need help, and those that are just trying to gain the system.
Well, that's what's happened with this 34, is there's been a rough assessment done on this 34, and if we, so, you know, 26 of them we've dealt with, that tells us that we're doing the right thing, even though there was two that absolutely didn't have help at all. It's good to know that they don't want any help at all. You know, that's a good thing to know.
Well, thank Major Deback for us. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions?
I have a question now. I think we have five places that feed the homeless in the city of Biloxi. Is there anything we can do to make sure that they eat inside the building?
That's something that Peter and I can talk about and see if there's an ordinance that controls that. I'll be honest with you, I'm not sure.
I don't know. A lot of times we leave, they go to the library, they go sit in the bus stops and everything else, you know? If they're going to feed them, then they need to eat inside the building.
We have, in the past, we have passed an ordinance that required, it was a job placement program, we required that they be inside and not hanging around outside. We're able to do that, and maybe we can do the same thing.
I think that's something we probably should have needed to look at.
We have been looking at that, and we've worked on a draft of that, and it's part of his findings and part of some longer-term solutions. We're looking to do that as well, putting those requirements. Some of that, we want to sit down and first talk to these people that are providing this, and let them understand where we're coming from, so we don't just have a big backlash and blowback. We let them know, and we find out what their needs are, and some of them, they may say, yeah, we could feed them inside, we want to keep them inside, and they want to get a go plate and leave, so we've got to, but we're starting to set up those meetings now.
Just like the Bag Bay Mission, you know, I think they should have a fence. That way, instead of sitting all over Division Street, nothing, behind the fence, and Bag Bay Mission does a lot of good, helping a lot of people, but, you know, you don't want 30, 40 people standing right there in the middle of the street.
Right.
So, I think if you put these things behind fences and stuff like that, it'd do better for everybody. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Dave.
I think Mike's going to give us an update on some events this week.
The mayor used the phrase "happening now" when we rolled into 2019, as a lot of projects we've been spending design money on started coming out of the ground. This week, we're going to see the finish line for three of them. On Thursday at 1:00 PM, we'll have the ribbon cutting for the new pedestrian crosswalk, the beautiful crosswalk that goes over the highway at the small Craft Harbor, one of George Lawrence's favorite projects. On Friday at 10:00 AM, Fire Station Number 10, our newest fire station, will be dedicated, and we'll have a groundbreaking ceremony out at the station on Old World Market Road, on 067, yeah, just around the corner from crossing over to Seed Lake Bridge, 10 o'clock. And finally, on Saturday at 1:00 PM, we'll have the dedication and ribbon cutting for the new Gold Star Families Memorial that's been built just today in the Guys Memorial Park down at the harbor. So, that's Thursday, Friday, and Saturday events. That event on Sunday, by the way, the, one of the people that's going to help us dedicate that ceremony, that monument, is a World War II veteran named Herschel Woody Williams, who happens to be the last surviving Medal of Honor winner from World War II, will be at that ceremony, so.
It's Saturday, right?
Saturday. It's Saturday, 1:00.
All right, Mike, thanks. Madam President, that concludes my report.
Thank you. You, Mayor? Do we have departmental reports? Looks like Oscar Renda, do, okay.
On, we'll start on the west end of the project. We will be finished Friday or Saturday with the remaining pipe work on Forest. Once they're finished with that work, the road crew will go back over there and finish the section of road that it remains to be paved. That's from Park Court to the end of the project, I think LaSalle or DeSoto.
Excuse me.
The, all the road base is in on Benaki. The curbing crew will be moving over there tomorrow to start doing all the curbing. Probably that Monday, we get back from Thanksgiving, is when we'll install the asphalt on Benaki. Benaki, Thelma, Esposito, those two little streets as well. And on Quavis, south of Division, the road crew started there today, putting in the road base, and that doesn't require any curbing, so asphalt should go down there pretty quickly as well. We installed base course of asphalt on all of Ranor, and right now, we got three crews working on sidewalks, so we're not far behind having all the sidewalks completed, sidewalks and driveways completed on Ranor. We're working the final punch list on SXSN, the, on the far east of the property of the project, GRN4, GRN5, so we're, we have a punch-out crews working in all of those areas, and we also have the fencing crew is back out on site, cleaning up, landscaping, restoration, so. That's all I've got.
Questions?
They had water running on, right by 392 Porter Avenue, and I talked to Bill O'Reilly, and I think they got in touch with Oscar Renda, y'all take care of that problem. It was, they thought it was sewer, but they said it wasn't sewer, it was just a busted water pipe somewhere in there.
392 Porter?
No, no, 392 Porter. Circle Park, right above Circle Park.
Oh, okay.
Okay, that's where that's at. Both things I talked to you about, one was at the top of Circle Park, the other one's at the bottom. So, you got both of them covered.
Wait, what now?
I said, one was at the top of Circle Park, that one's at the bottom.
Okay.
So, the two things I talked to you, we didn't want to spot anywhere, you don't have to go too far.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Guines?
Yeah, I'm glad to hear Quaver Street there, starting back on Quaver Street. It's been down about two or three months, and I just got a call from a lady yesterday about, you know, she's handicapped, and it's becoming more of a safety issue now of people getting in and out. So, do you have any timeframe that that would be finished?
Well, I would, I think it's a small street. That's one of the problems. They had 12 drainage structures that they put on that little street, not to mention everything else that was in there, but I say probably by the end of the week, we'll have all the road base in there.
And speaking of safety issues, I've turned it in several times. There's still a lot of sidewalks not done from Calvet Street back east, and one of the main ones is Roy Street. I have another handicap, of course, you know, when I talk about safety issues, you know, we have a lot of elderly, a lot of handicapped, and we still have unfinished sidewalks, and that's becoming real dangerous. We've been dealing with it probably for the last four or five years now, and Roy Street, I have a handicapped guy on Roy Street between Nixon and Nichols Drive, and that's been sitting there probably about almost a year now.
That little area of that street has been removed from our contract. When AT&amp;T was going in, doing all of their, installing all that conduit, their subcontractor bored a line through our water main, and it buckled the whole entire street, so that whole section of street is being redone by the AT&amp;T contractor.
Okay, so I need to talk to my project manager, right?
Well, yeah, probably.
Okay, and we were given a, you know, we were given, I guess, a roundabout that by the end of November, we should be just about wrapping up from Calvet Street West, and it didn't look like we're going to make that. Is there any timeframe that we can, we can kind of start looking to, start wrapping things up? Division Street, even down from Nichols all the way to Main Street is still undone, and I at least thought that we would have that at a minimum.
That's on the, we have a leveling course of asphalt on there. The final surface course should be placed at the beginning of December.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Matrangelo. Council reports, Mr. Lawrence?
We intended that Biloxi had made good Thursday night, and we didn't make the Mardi Gras Museum, but I think the mayor went and Paul went. Was you there at the museum?
Yeah.
Yeah, museum. Anyway, I thought it was pretty good, you have somebody from Biloxi made good, doing something else. They bring them back, and they welcome them, I think that's a good thing. And in that case, it was Skmetti, Speltwood and I, there was seven brothers, and it was pretty amazing to see that many of them. One of them passed away, but they have seven of them now. That's pretty neat. That's a good thing, that the city does, and the chamber does. Thank you.
Mr. Guines?
Yeah, I'd like to ask the project manager to give me an update on some of the, I would like him to submit in writing. I've already asked before some of the streets that are, the percentage of streets that are done. I need that in writing. I've asked probably two, three weeks ago, and I'm going to continue to ask again, and if he can't provide it, we need to get somebody who can provide me that information. Thank you.
Mr. Tisdale?
Yes, just for anybody out there, I send out an e-blast for anybody who's interested. If you'd like to receive it, it's free. It's information-packed, one page. I'm a one-page kind of guy. Just email me at PTisdale1@yahoo.com. I'll add you to the list. We did have a nice turnout for last Friday's seniors' Thanksgiving breakfast. Mayor, you made it, didn't you? We have a photograph to prove it, and they had a nice turnout. It's very nicely done by Parks and Recreation. Thank you. And I'd like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. We won't have a council meeting, I think, till Tuesday, December 3rd, so we've got a couple of weeks to relax, and that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Barrett?
Just a reminder, we have our Christmas parade in World Market, December the 14th, so anyone that's interested in being a part of that, and also Mike, did he step out? On the, and Chief Boni might be able to answer this, on the fire station, I know we're doing the ribbon cutting, is that going to, the station going to be going online this week, or is that something that's just a completion as far as the?
It is our intention to put it online after the ribbon cutting. However, there's, there are a couple of issues that still need to be resolved with the fire station. We anticipate they will be resolved by that time.
But something in the near, very near future.
If not, it'll be a couple of days after that.
Okay, all right, that's all. Thanks. That's all I have.
Okay, we'll move on to the public agenda, where we have citizen comments. Each citizen is allowed three minutes each to speak, and we have 45 minutes allotted total. Once you reach the desk, please sign your name and address, as well as state it aloud for the record. Anyone on my left, your right, that would like to come up and speak? Anyone on my left, your right? Anyone on my right, your left, that would like to come up and speak? No one? Anyone in the back? All right. Citizen comments are now closed. Move on to the policy agenda, which we don't have anything, so do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Tisdale, second by Mr. Guines. Any discussion, Mr. Barrett?
I do have a question. On item N, is that money coming out of the original $50,000, or is that coming out of the bond money?
That's coming out of the bond money.
Okay.
That's what we already got budgeted.
All right.
Mr. Tisdale?
Nothing.
Mr. Demming?
Nothing. I'm hoping for a record meeting, because you're coughing, and he's sick, and they're sniffling, and I want to leave.
Mr. Guines?
Nothing. I think it's, we got the Prox Center donation from Mississippi Power. We want to thank Mississippi Power for that donation to help out on the civic community. So, that's all, just my comment.
Mr. Lawrence?
On L, we received that money, which is a good thing for the Bayview. When will that get started?
Councilman, the Goleman's money is going to move pretty fast. We turned in our spending plan. The spending plan was approved. They've issued us the MOU. You're signing, you're approving, the mayor's signing the MOU. Once that MOU is back and signed by DMR, we can start billing.
I think one, there's a public information session on, it's 12th?
12th of December.
At the DMR.
Public hearing on that project at DMR.
All right. And we'll roll from there.
Not a requirement, something we're doing just to get the neighborhood brought in.
That's good, let everybody know what we're doing, what we're planning on doing. That's going to be a good thing for the Bayview.
Yeah, unlike, unlike some of the other grants, we don't have to wait for the legislature on this one. The money's available, and we can start billing as soon as that MOU is assigned.
Do we know what time that public hearing might be at DMR?
Four.
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 Okay, thank you.
At the Bolton Building.
Bolton Building, the auditorium thing, west side of it.
First floor.
I know y'all worked with the governor. The other grant on the beach, did you receive that one, or is that in the line?
Yeah, similar plan, we got to give them a similar plan on both of the...
We submitted our spending plan. They've come back with a couple of questions that we need to sort out, but that, once that's sorted out, they'll issue the MOU just like this one, and we'll sign the MOU. Council will approve us signing the MOU. We'll submit the MOU back, and they'll sign it, and that one, of course, we've got some design work to do still, too.
Did you ever go any further with the walkway on the point that goes around by the CP Museum, like putting steps where it's empty with the rocks and?
Well, the employees.
Well, we almost, they put the sod in today, yeah. Yeah. The other question, I think we talked about Monday, was some of the, I guess, debris removal things that we had done before, removing some of the rebar and all around the rock area and the beach area, because it's a pretty good sandy bottom there, so we kicked that around this Monday. But the project should be wrapping up soon. We striped the parking lot, and the lights are up, and I'm just trying to think of what I saw today at lunchtime, but...
It's looking good there.
Yeah.
Like I said, about 95% complete.
They're looking good. The outside wall, are we going to do anything about putting steps or something, something to that on, around the outside? You have to have something to protect that.
We may have two, you know, set of steps or some access to the water, but not completely. I don't, removing all that riffraff that's there, or even adding to it, may cause some permit problems, but we can get access...
But we can get access from the east and the west side and maybe one in the center. But, you know, we want that, restore that beachfront, you know, it's best soft shell and around in Biloxi in that area.
Yeah, the steps would make it easy to get to that, you know? Because all you do is connect it to the seawall where they have steps. So, I'll just take it.
But, you know, I think Mississippi State, we talked to something about Living Shoreline. We hit a couple of projects that we may be engaging with them. But we're going to get that wrapped up and figure out what we need to do for the debris removal.
Thank you.
Because you know, you may have seen on the news, we got a little problem with the tree. That little problem with the tree. So, if anybody doesn't think the mayor loves trees, I know that this is him.
He didn't kiss it, so.
The audience said, "When I was official, the tree hugged him."
Any other questions, comments, concerns on the consent agenda? Unanimous votes with Barrett again. N as in Nancy.
Me, too.
And so is Lawrence.
N, right.
Is that it?
Say again? N. Yeah, against it.
All right. Code enforcement.
The only case we have for code enforcement is item A, Sanjeev Arbatka, 2459 Pass Road, and the property is still in violation.
30 days and doing it good?
No, sir.
Are they making any progress though?
Hasn't done anything. And usually, I could call Sonny. I mean, I did call him this last time and he said, "Look, if y'all give me 30 days, I'll get it done." But he just, he hasn't got it done, so.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Sanjeev Ar, how you say his name? Bhakta at 2459 Pass Road? Being known one, this case is closed. Do we have a motion on the routine agenda?
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Guines, second by Mr. Tisdale. Any discussion, Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, all can, how much money we took in this week? How many millions?
We got three million from the city, $2.5 million.
So, it's keeping us up to date. Not behind at all, right? Because the mayor's on top of them. When he's not hugging trees, he does a little work for the city sometimes, you know? Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Unanimous votes? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Motion by Mr. Tisdale, second by Mr. Guines. All in favor? Unanimous votes? Meeting adjourns. Happy Thanksgiving.